I'll call the Dallas City Council meeting to order, April 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. I'll ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Council President Briggs?
Here.
Counsel Berantos?
Yeah.
Counsel Blaser?
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counsel Jants?
Here.
Counsel Schilling?
Here.
Counsel Shane?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Will everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing I have on the agenda, we have an Arbor Day proclamation that I will read. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil, by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas Dallas is proudly a Tree City, USA, and planted over 100 trees on public grounds last year to add to the many trees that have been planted by our citizens, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Richard Slack, Mayor of the City of Dallas, hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Dallas, and urge all citizens to celebrate this fine day by planting and caring for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generations. Is there any other introductions or proclamations? All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. This is a time set land use public hearing on amending the comprehensive plan and adopting the Lockreall Node Master Plan. I will now open the hearing at 7:02. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with the staff report, followed by questions from the council of staff. Therefore thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided three minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide staff with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the city council to deliberate and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. Will the staff please present their report?
Commissioner Slack, I'll invite our city planner Chase Blue to come up and present the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chase Blue, city planner. So this, this is on the subject of the update of the Lockreall Node Master Plan, which we began back in 2023. The original plan that we had was from the early 2000s, and so quite a few years out of date now, so we've been at council direction, we've been updating that. From February of 2023 through November, we did a planning process, public outreach, those sorts of things, brought the plan to you in November of 2023 for review. Subsequent to that, we've spent 2024 working on auditing our development code, our comprehensive plan, to figure out the steps that would be needed to implement the new master plan. And so that is the first step that we are having here for you today, is going to be implementing the master plan into the comprehensive plan. We did have an open house on this subject last week as well, at the Lockreall Middle School, which was, I think, fairly well-attended. But sort of walking through that a little bit, so for those of you who are unfamiliar, the Lockreall Node is the area north of Ellendale to the northeast part of town. With this proposal, we are looking to expand the boundaries of that to also include areas south of Ellendale, to expand the node, given the investments that the city is making in that area. The Lockreall Node is one of three areas in town that are targeted for more intensive development, the others being the Barberry Node and the Wyatt Node, which is on the west side of town. So as part of the expansion of the node boundary to include areas south of Ellendale, as well as extending further east out past Oak Villa Road, the council would be adopting essentially this amendment to the comprehensive plan map. The highlighted area in green there on the comprehensive plan map being the new boundary of the Lockreall Node, which is also on the handout that we have for you. And as shown on this map as well, the dashed blue line being the proposed new Lockreall Node boundary. The overall concept that was developed back in 2023 was a significant expansion of the commercial land in response to the Economic Opportunities Analysis of 2021, which found a fairly significant deficit in commercial land over the next 20 years for the city. You may have noticed that as places like Grocery Outlet and those sorts of areas have developed, there's not a lot of large, open, commercial land still available in town. So this would seek to rectify that by designating more areas for commercial development. Those are the areas on red in the map, north of Ellendale, south of Kings Valley Highway, so kind of sandwiched between those two state highways, with the extension of Lockreall Drive through that area to provide some through connectivity. We're also looking at medium and high-density residential on the periphery of those areas, including Hawthorne Avenue and Oak Villa Road, sort of in development potential of those areas, both to meet the city's long-term housing needs, from our 2018 Housing Needs Analysis, which found a shortage of those housing types, as well as to maximize the return on investment for the city's investment in the sewer infrastructure that's being built in that area. And then we also have, south of Ellendale, a new mixed-use designation, that the exact parameters around that yet to be determined, that would be a zoning code issue, amendments to the zoning code not in front of us at this time, so a little fuzzy what the exact parameters on that will be, but that's why we have this process, to figure out what these sorts of things are going to be. So step one on our timeline here is to amend the comprehensive plan map, to include the new boundary, to adopt this master plan into the comprehensive plan as the future zoning designation for the area. Step two will be rezoning of the properties that are inside the city, we're looking at maybe November of this year, tentatively for that, and then kind of, I'm sorry, amending the zoning code, November of this year, so that's the language in the code of what's allowed where, what the setbacks, densities, those kinds of parameters are for development. And then amending the zoning map itself, property by property, at a future date kind of to be determined, probably driven largely by development interest in the area. Many of the properties involved are not currently in city limits, and so would have to be annexed and rezoned to a city zoning designation before any sort of development could occur. So it is kind of a long-term plan in that sense. For reference on how that future zoning would tie into the existing zoning of the city, I do have this exhibit here as well, so you can kind of see that we've got some high-density next to high-density outside the boundary, commercial next to some commercial that's outside the boundary, so try to be a little consistent in the design of the overall area. But that's a future implementation, the zoning changes. Today, we're just looking at the comprehensive plan update. Certainly happy to answer questions that commissioners may have on this subject.
Questions?
That's the end of my slide deck.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Since you've got that slide up, I don't have to ask you to go back to it. Is everything inside the blue line currently within UGB?
Yes, everything in the Lockreall Node, as shown here, is inside the urban growth boundary. The city does not have any planning authority outside of the urban growth boundary.
And about the city limits, I assume not all of that is within the current city limits, is that true?
That is correct. I would say probably a third, thereabouts, of the area is within city limits. Much of the area that isn't inside city limits doesn't currently have sewer service, and that historically has been the barrier to redevelopment in this area, and so that's why we're making investments on that front at this time.
That comment applied to a slice of Hawthorne as well?
Yeah, there's no sewer along Hawthorne, and so that's why the area along Hawthorne that's in color on this map is outside of the city limits, yep.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll go ahead and move into public testimony. Public testimony will, thank you, Chase. Public testimony will now be allowed for the record. Please state your name and whether you live within the city limits of Dallas. You have three minutes to testify, and we'll alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the three-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable.
So for those testifying tonight, I have the timer here, and so I'll start it when you start, and then when the yellow light comes on, it means you have 30 seconds left. When the red light comes on, your time's done. I'll also hold up the sign just as a visual reminder that you have 30 seconds left. So for anyone that wants to testify, if you just want to raise your hand, the mayor will invite you up.
Sir, go ahead and come up to the table here, so we can hear you on the mic.
And we're nearly, I'm a member of this area for almost 20 years, I'm retired military. I live on LNL, I am not in the city limits, I am in the blue area. So I don't have sewer, I have a septic system. Me and my neighbor are retired, and we're living on a fixed income, and now we're looking at the city expansion, pushing sewer out there, and every place I've ever seen, that when a sewer hookup is past us, you're required to hook up to the city, and we, the owners of the property, have to pay for that. With the current environment in the country, with terrorists and everything else, there's great concern of those on social security and everything else, the impact of us who choose to come to Dallas 20 years ago, when I was still active duty, to buy a house to retire here. Now I'm looking, I could be exorbed into this, and I don't know if me and my neighbor are going to be able to survive the city when you mandate sidewalks, mandate sewer, mandate all the other changes that's going to come to a piece of property that I bought 20 years ago, to be part of this community. Being in the blue area, we don't see good, clear plans of what our future is, what our tax base is, what's going to affect us, because it's fuzzy pseudo still, and that is great concern. Because my property tax will be based on what's ever decided for that fuzzy pseudo, or whatever you decide when we're zoned in. That is my concern, thank you for your time.
Sir? Do we have anyone else who wants to testify tonight? Do we have anyone on the phone?
Ginger, did you want to testify during the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
No.
No further discussion. Oh wait, do any of the council have any additional questions for the staff before? Go ahead, Larry.
I've got a question for Chase. Could you just explain to us what the requirements would be for such citizen here to, are we, would we be mandating them to hook up to city services, or is it their option if they decide to be annexed into the city? At that time, they would be forced to do that.
So generally, we are not able to provide utility services, sewer services, to properties outside of city limits. So until the property is annexed into the city, it would generally be not eligible for service, and we wouldn't be in a position to force them to connect. Even once a property is annexed, typically, any existing septic tanks that are in place and in good condition are allowed to remain as such. They simply cannot be upgraded or replaced, so when the septic tank does fail, they're ultimately required to hook up to the sewer if it's available. But we wouldn't necessarily be in a position to require that of them at the time that we're putting sewer and all of that into place.
So the annexation into the city is solely based on the property owner wanting to do that?
Generally, yes.
Generally?
So I would say to the exception to that, there's a state law that says that if a property that's on a septic, that's within urban growth boundary, if their drain field fails, or their septic system fails, and they're within 300 feet of an existing sewer line, the state law requires them to connect to that sewer line. I'm not an expert on this law, and I mentioned this at the meeting that we were at on Thursday, and I didn't look into it before tonight, but I'm pretty sure that that state law does not require them to annex. It does require them to connect, and so they would have to pay the service charges to make the connection, but I don't believe they're required to annex under that state law, as it's currently written. That law's been amended a few times over the years, but that's generally the exception, is that if sewer line exists, they're within 300 feet and in the urban growth boundary, and their septic system fails, state law requires them to connect.
Questions of staff? Yes, Michael.
Brian, can you clarify this? Just to refresh me on taxation, under our measures 5 and 50, taxation, even though the land use type is changed, the assessed value would not change at that point in time? Is that correct?
So with this, with what you're considering tonight, you're considering an adoption of a master plan, there's no rezoning that's actually taking place tonight. In the future, if a property were to, either a property that's in the city now decided to rezone consistent with this plan, or a future annexation of a property that's outside the city limits, came into the city and had a city zoning applied to it, at that time, the county assessor would look at that property, they would do an assessment, and they would say, the zoning has changed, is the zoning that now exists, does that make this property more value, in terms of, is the land more valuable? So the properties are assessed both with a land value and an improvement value. So the assessor would make the decision on, based on the zoning that's applied at the time, is that zoning make this land more valuable than the land was before? If it does, then they would assess what that land value would be, and they would assess taxes based on that. So could the value of the land increase upon a rezoning? Yes, there's potential for that. Could it decrease? There's potential for that, depending on what the zoning was, what uses were allowed versus what's allowed under that change. But there's no rezoning taking place with the decision that the council's making tonight, you're simply saying, in the future, if properties decide that they would like to be rezoned, annexed, at that time, there could be tax implications, but nothing tonight.
Usually that would be at request upon the property owner, the rezoning?
Correct.
Questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, thanks, Chase. If there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at 7:19. Is there a motion by the council?
There's a recommended motion on page six, if someone would like to make that motion, and again, it adopts the motion, well, go ahead and make the motion. Let me just describe what it is.
I move to approve the comprehensive plan and map amendments and the Lockreall Node Master Plan as presented, and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for adoption by the city council.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have one question on the amendment, section 6.2.3. It says, "To promote an orderly, efficient, and economic pattern of growth, urban services, including water and sewer facilities, may," is what's been changed from "will," "be extended to urbanizable lands only upon annexation to the cities, particularly within designated master plan nodes." Would there ever be a case where we would not provide services when someone wanted to be annexed in?
On page 48. So I just catch up on the section, can you repeat your question?
So we're changing "will" to "may," giving the city an option to provide these services if someone so chose to be annexed in, and my question is, why, would there be a reason why we wouldn't want to provide services to them if they were wanting to be annexed into the city? Shouldn't that remain as "will" or "shall"?
Talk about the stuff in blue.
Well, if you were leading it up to the property owner to annex themselves in, wouldn't it be a "may" instead of a "will"? They may choose to, or they have to, they will do it?
Property owner so chooses to be annexed in, and the city says, no, we're not going to provide services to you. I would think that if they're obligating themselves to pay the higher tax rate, that we should give them services of which they're paying for.
Say no in a circumstance like that?
So when a property requests annexation, one of the approval criteria, and Chase, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because you're more familiar with our codes, work with them on a daily basis, in order to be annexed, a property has to be able to have services, you know, those are urbanizable services, so water, sewer, you know, those are the services that are required to be there. And so what this is saying is, you know, in order for the city to, you know, provide an orderly, efficient, you know, economic pattern of growth, urban services, including those services, you know, may be extended to urbanizable lands upon annexation to the city. So a property would not be annexed if those services were not available, because they couldn't meet that criteria. So it's, I'm curious, because I wasn't involved in the amendment of this, I don't know if our new attorney was also involved, or Chase, do you know why the rationale, why that was changed from a "will" to a "may"? I don't think it's, it wouldn't have an effect of the city not extending services, or a developer, you know, not allowing a developer to extend the services, because in order for them to annex, they have to do that. If we're not comfortable with the change from "will" to "may," I don't know what the reasoning is. If you want that to be "will" again, we can switch that back to "will."
He wanted to know why it was changed in the first place.
I'll amend my motion. If that's, or do you want to make an amendment and then vote on the amendment?
Or can I, probably cleaner to vote on the amendment if we want to change, to revise this back to "will." Do you want to do that? Do you want to revise that comp plan, instead of saying, instead of saying, leaving it "will" instead of "may"?
Please.
All right, so you're making a motion to amend page 48, paragraph 6.2.3.1, instead of "may," shall be "will."
Motion to amend, do we have a second?
Second.
There have been motion and second, any discussion on the amendment? If so, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, does he need to make the motion again as amended?
Still on the table.
Discussion on the main motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes.
So this is a, just as a follow-up, what we'll do then is, so the motion, as it was voted on and approved, is to accept the plan, which was shown on the screen, so this plan here, as part of the comprehensive plan, you also amended the boundary of the Lockreall Node area, and amended the text of the comprehensive plan as it was listed there, with the one amendment that was also approved from "may" back to "will." That will be incorporated into an ordinance and brought back to the council at your next meeting.
All right. An order reflecting the city council decisions tonight will be mailed to all participants of record within five business days. All right, now we now will move on to public comment. For the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live inside the city limits. You have up to three minutes, it's your turn to talk and ours to listen, you are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor, do not direct your comments to individual councilors, staff members, or the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you'll maintain decorum and respect for each other, a wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore, we would kindly ask that you refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions take attention from the speaker, the audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. First up, I have Robert Greenway.
Hello, Robert Greenway, I live on the city lines. I'd like to start out with two things I'm going to talk about, is the franchise agreement for public services and the sewer. I've been talking about it for over a year now, have never got any answers from anybody, whether it's the city council or the management. Right now, we're going to talk about corruption in the city in the franchise agreement. Since the franchise agreement is based on a percentage, there is no incentive for the city to keep the rates down, because they get a percentage of what they put forth. I consider that a conflict of interest. It doesn't have to be a percentage. I've looked into it, and a lot of places where I've come from before, it was a flat fee, so there is no reason to finagle here and there. Nobody's ever given an answer. Alls it does is benefits the city. You know, we don't know where the money goes, it's up to a general fund. The citizens get the shaft. Again, the franchise agreement should be fixed. You make resolutions, you just made a resolution, just there, just a little slickety split to change something, so I don't know why you can't do that, which I've brought up many a times. I've lived here just a little over a year, I've kept track of it, so between February of last year and February of this year, whether you know it or not, the rates have gone up 27%. When I first moved here, my first bill was $48, and now it's $62. So put that in your pockets and smoke it. You guys have no idea, because most people don't keep track of that. And part of that money that was staying was some extra that you guys of that. And part of that money that was saying was some extra that you guys let the Republic add, that they went to pick up the recycle every week. When I went to the meeting, there was no justification for it. When I called them up and asked them for justification, if they got, you know, put out a letter to the people if they even wanted it, there was none. They just wanted the money, and you guys allowed it. So, you know. The next thing is the sewer rates. I've asked everybody here, I've asked the certain members specifically, I've asked the city manager. There is two rates in the city. One's a flat rate, and one's a flat rate with, with usage, okay? I've checked every city within a 25-mile radius here, and I've told you before that, that everybody's going to the usage rate, because that's only fair for everybody, just like everything else. But you guys, and then I ask a specific question, and nobody has answered it, okay?
It's time, Mr. Greenway.
Why in the hell is there two rates? Nobody can stand up, just stand up and say, "That's because we want to do it that way." You know, but there's got to be a reason.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. Your time's done. Thank you.
You know, come up with an answer, you know, stand up and grow some balls, and tell me why there's two rates.
Mr. Greenway, your time is over. Thank you.
Next up, I have Ann Heard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing but good news to report. A couple months ago, an elderly member of the pool donated almost $2,800 for scholarships for swim lessons. And that, that covered 65 swim lessons for kids as scholarships. So, we took those certificates over to the Polk Resource Center, and they are being used, and we're so thrilled. They're signing up for classes, and after each set of classes, the pool will let the friends at the Dallas Aquatic Center know how many certificates were used, and we will give them a check to pay those back out of the scholarship funds. Also, since I was here last, we have had several large donations. One in particular was from the Lee Schlinker family. In memorial, in a memorial gift for his wife, Carol A. and Franka, they gave us $3,200 to the pool in her name. And so, we will be putting her name up on our memorial board. And because of that, I have another $5,000 to give you tonight, and we're halfway to another $5,000. And we use this money to fix things at the pool. Finally, the check valve was fixed that brings in city water to the pool. It was leaking, going down the drain, but now it's all going into the pools. And there's another check valve that's also 25 years old, so we've just got our fingers crossed for that one. Also, all the heat exchangers are, that, a heat exchanger regulates the heat for the pools. The one for the kiddie pool has been cold for over three months, but that's all going to be fixed this month. All those heat exchangers are going to be fixed. And so, we paid $9,000 for the check valve, and we will be paying a lot of these other costs that are coming up. Also, the sand filters that we requested funds for back in June or July, and we got all this money from people who had never even donated before, but are members of the pool and realize how valuable it is, we're now going to get, be able to get those fixed too. So, thank you very much. I hope you come to the pool sometime. I'd always love to see you. Thank you.
Do we have anyone on the phone for public comment?
Ginger, did you want to provide public comment? Hang on one second. Ginger, unmute yourself if you want to provide comment.
There we go. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we're a little concerned, and we haven't really gotten what we really want to hear yet, but we're the owners of 1016, 1070, 1030, and 1020. You guys kind of started out with something, and then you went into sewer, and it's a big deal at the Bel Air Mobile Home Park. We got 10 septic tanks. So, my, our main concern is, when you guys are talking about, if we have to hook up, if one septic tank isn't working properly, that concerns me when I have 10 tanks with all these properties. We cover over 20 acres, and I still haven't, nobody's really told us exactly what's going on behind where Dutch Brothers is, that runs along our property going that way. Everything seems to be going Hawthorne, going the other way. And I apologize for the directions, I'm not really familiar with this. So, that's one of our major concerns. I've also been told by the lady from the county that Ginger and I went and talked to less than a year ago, walked into her office and said that they were going to put a major road right through the middle of our property. And I basically said, "Over my dead body, you will," and she basically said, "It was a done deal." Well, we listened to the zoning.
Oh, they froze.
Not too long ago, and she basically sat right there and lied. This was not a done deal, and that's why we're here tonight to listen in on this. You, it seems like the left hand and the right hand is not communicating here with the city and the county. And this, this is a big deal, you guys. Nobody's talking to each other. I got 20 acres here, and nobody's going to come through my property, guarantee it. But why ain't you two, why ain't you guys talking first, and then letting the community know what's going on? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. You have anyone else on the line?
They're really not going to ask him. Let me answer.
No.
All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have on the consent agenda, approve the March 17, 2025 work session meeting minutes, and approve the March 17, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Does anyone, anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion. Approve?
Second.
Been moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Reports or comments from mayor and council members? Does anyone have anything to report? Carlos?
Yes, sir. I'm on the Board of Directors of Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Committee, and I want to report that we just received a grant for over $800,000, and the grant is to help support folks who have having some type of financial adversity and difficulties. The biggest thing about this grant is it serves citizens in Marion County and Polk County. And I'm the only one on the Board of Directors that is from Polk County, so I'm advocating to anybody in Polk County who has some financial difficulties or financial adversities, to reach out to Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, and they will help to support you for the next 24 months with this grant of over $800,000.
Carlos, anyone else have any? If not, we'll move on to the city manager and staff reports.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, there are three items that are on the list, but there's one additional one that I'll, I'll start with, and that was a letter from our former councillor, Debbie Verden. She sent this letter on April 3, 2025, and it reads as follows, "Dallas City Councilors, Mayor Slack, and citizens of Dallas, while I have thoroughly enjoyed the research, discussions, and public input during my years as a city councillor, there are other matters that, matters which need and deserve my full focus right now. Volunteering and serving others are cornerstones of my nature, and I plan to continue with that aspect of my life for many years to come, especially with organizations that give a hand up to the disadvantaged. I may, at a later point in life, run for office or apply to be on a committee, but for now, my decision is to resign from the Dallas City Council effective immediately. It has been both an honor and a privilege to serve my beloved community, and I have been blessed to have received so much positive feedback and support from Dallas citizens. Only God comes before my family, and I have clearly heard His instruction to me. I firmly believe that with obedience comes blessings. May God continue to bless you all with wisdom, patience, and the hearts to serve. Thank you for all you do. Sincerely, Debbie Verden." And again, that was received on April 3, 2025, with an effective resignation date of that day. So, what that means is there's a current vacancy on the council. The council rules of procedure are under consideration tonight. The admin committee's been working the last few months to amend those, including a process for replacing a councillor when there's a vacancy. So, my recommendation is to run through the rest of the meeting tonight, have a discussion on council vacancy process with those rules of procedure, and we'll have, depending on the outcome of that, we'll maybe have a further discussion on how to fill this vacancy in the future. Any questions or comments about that? Okay. If not, the next topic is a budget committee appointment. This is on page 115 of your packet. Right now, we have one vacancy on the budget committee, and we have an applicant, Sarah McMaster. So, she has submitted her application, it's included on pages 116 and 117 of the packet. Sarah is a Dallas resident, she is applying to fill a term that would expire December of 2026. She is the only applicant to apply for that one vacancy, and there's a recommended motion to appoint Sarah McMaster to serve on the budget committee with a term that expires December 31 of 2026.
Do I have any discussion? David?
I, I know Debbie personally very well. I've served with her on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce and, and elsewhere, and she'll be great, just absolutely great.
Sarah, not Debbie.
I'm sorry, Sarah, excuse me.
Any other discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to appoint Sarah McMaster to serve on the budget committee with a term that expires December 31, 2026.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Counsel goals.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, item 7B on page 119 of the council packet is the council goals. So, just as a reminder, back in February of this year, the city council met with city staff and our consultant to develop new council goals for the next two years. Those goals are included on the following pages of the packet. I also included with our city recorder, a large version of them, so they're more legible, easier to read. You've, you've already seen these and have had time to review them. And so, they're before you. There's also included as attachment B to the report, the goal-setting report that was put together by the consultants, just kind of outlines the entire process. The city council did prioritize the objectives within each goal area. That prioritization is reflected in the goals matrix, which is provided for you. And so, tonight, we're just looking for a motion by the council to approve the 2025 to 2027 goals as listed in the attachment.
Right, any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the city council 2025, 2027 goals as listed in attachment A.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, Brian?
Note for the vote that councillor Jance was not here for that. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Godsey Road funding agreement, and I'll invite our Public Works Director, Gary Marks, to come up and discuss this topic.
Slack, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. So, in March of 2017, the city entered into a funding agreement with ODOT to reconstruct Godsey Road, the entire length of Godsey Road between Miller Avenue and Monmouth Cut Off Road. At the time, there were other elements of the funding package to make that happen. I've, I've given you some details in the staff report. A major, a major funding source connected with a, a business that was looking at locating adjacent to Godsey Road fell through, so there was some state funding that went away. And over the years, the cost of the project escalated to the point where there was no chance that $1.4 million was going to do much of anything. It's questionable how much it would have done originally, but certainly with the bridge and the project, there was just no way that we would come close to the needed funding. So, I've been here a little over five years now. Right after I arrived here, I had a discussion with the manager for this grant program at ODOT. At the time, or this was right after the business had pulled out, ODOT was suggesting, "Well, if you can't build the entire length, then maybe you should just allow us to dissolve this agreement." And I wasn't really thinking that was in our best interest, so I decided to sit on it. And it was just like last year, early last year, staffing changes at ODOT occurred, and I was contacted by the person who replaced whoever it was that I talked to before, and they said, "Hey, is there some way that we might be able to use this, this money for your project?" And so, we discussed reducing the scope, and they were willing to amend it. So, hey, dang, you know. So, that was about fall by the time we came to that point. We've been waiting since for the state to come up with the amended agreement for you all to look at. We received that recently, it's in your packet. Basically, what it does is allows us to build the south portion of Godsey Road, and that's a wider roadway, bike lanes, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, ADA ramps, street lighting.
You say "south portion," do you mean from the bridge to the cutoff?
Yeah, I was about to delineate that. From about approximately Olive Street down to Monmouth Cut Off Road. And actually, there's a little piece of Monmouth Cut Off Road that's, that's in the project for the intersection there. So, that's, that's what the agreement before you does. It's a couple other little technical changes it makes to update people who need to be contacted. And also, since 2017, ODOT's gone through an evolution in their approach to ADA, so there's significant language in the agreement concerning ADA, which is fine with us, because we would do it anyway. So, this allows us, with approval of this agreement, to access that $1.4 million. This is a 10-year agreement, and so, this project needs to happen next year, because it expires March of 2027. So, we have, we need to renovate or revise the plans. We have a full set of plans right now, by the way, for the entire length of the, of the road. We're currently working with our engineers to truncate that down to the new scope. Once that's done, then we should be able to go out to bid next winter, or early spring, and be prepared for a construction of this section of the street in the summer of next year, 2026. So, like I said, that needs to happen. I don't know that we would be able to build it over the winter, maybe we could, but before March 2027, this project needs to happen. And the condition of the road would tell you this project needs to happen as well. So, this is good news, and if you have any questions about the agreement, I'd be happy to respond. And so, that's my report.
So, the new revised total estimate for the project is $1,671,000? Page 135.
On the amendment?
Exhibit 2, page 135.
The, the, the agreement, you know, okay, this is the way, if you're, if you're looking at the amended agreement, or the agreement.
This is local.
ODOT gets money from the feds, and then they take a cut of it, and what's left is $1.41 million that comes to us. They take some of the money to, for administration, and so, what we get is $1.41 million.
That we're receiving.
Yes, that we're receiving from the state.
And the project cost is?
It's 3.1, because we're looking at another $1.7 million, which I think most, if not all of that, will come from our street development fees.
Next question. Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
The part of the road that we're simply replacing cannot be used, we cannot use SDCs for that, but the money from ODOT could cover that portion of it. Will it be exactly in those proportions? I'm not sure. There might be a little bit that needs to come out of the street fund. That will clarify itself as we move through the revision of the plans.
Job, by the way.
David, did you have a question?
I'm gonna move the motion, but I think Carlos says one.
Go ahead.
It seems like the cost to repair two-thirds of Godsey is twice the cost that it was initially bid at. So it's initially 1.4, and we're up to 3.1. Is that correct?
1.4 has always been what the state would put into it, but they, I can't really speak to what the estimate was for the project in 2017, I wasn't here, but I know that the other funding that was going to come through Business Oregon was another $1 million, and I believe the city was going to need to put money in on top of that. So yes, the cost has gone up, particularly if you look at the cost of the bridge. That's really escalated, but that is no longer a part of this, part of the project, which, thank you, I didn't mention the bridge. We've not forgotten about the bridge. In fact, last week, I listened in to an ODOT committee meeting where they were deciding which bridges to fund in the next state transportation improvement plan. And out of the, I think there was 13 bridges vying for money, we were lucky to be one of the three that got funding through that. So because we are not what they, ODOT calls a certified agency, we are not, we cannot build that project. So it'll likely be an ODOT project, which is one of the major reasons why it's segregated out from the street. So we can expect that project to probably come along, I'm hoping, the year after this one.
That's gonna be an extra $2.5 million, right? That's gonna be on ODOT?
Well, actually, it's more than 2.5.
It says 2.5.
Yeah, it's probably a little north of 4 million. We'll be needing to match the 2.5. The 2.5 is what ODOT has decided to fund, which was not full funding, but it's 2.5 and enlisted in the STIP.
Thank you. That answers. In the other business, the anomaly was they were supposed to add in $1 million to the 1.4, right? Which would have brought it up to 2.4. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the city manager to sign amendment number one to Local Agency Agreement 31218 with the Oregon Department of Transportation to provide $1.4 million to the South Godsey Road reconstruction project.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other reports, Brian? All right, we'll move on to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 1907.
Slack, ordinance 1907 is an ordinance establishing a special exception to the prohibition against the provision of city water to property outside the city limits and urban growth boundary. And Tom Gilson is here, our special projects manager. If you must come up and just describe why you're seeing this ordinance today. It's kind of a unique situation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Gilson, the reason this is in front of you is our city code has the, let's see, section 4.486. It actually prohibits any properties outside of the city limits and urban growth boundary from obtaining a water service unless they have a written agreement that predates the May 20 of 2009 date, if they have a written agreement before that, or after that date, if they allow us to access their property for like a transmission line, then we will grant a service as we cross their property. This property owner is requesting an exemption from that because they're on Elliott Road, which is actually south of town. And, you know, doing a little bit of research on it, we couldn't find any paperwork that stated that they had, you know, who granted permission. And we've been serving this, you know, in the report I put for decades. I did a little bit of research earlier today just to find out exactly when. The first meter was set for this property in June of 1920, so we've been serving them water for 105 years. And then the second one, which is for the dryer on that property, was set in, you know, 1942. So both of the meters probably would have predated any agreements that would have been written anyway. I mean, they predated our dam. So it's been around for a long time. My understanding is the property owner is wanting to vacate the properties for a time being, I think, whether to, you know, do repairs. I don't know the reason being, but they're asking that they want to be able to remove the water services for a time being, but then have it accessible in the future. And so they're asking for an exemption from our city code so that they will be able to be granted those water services in the future.
So essentially, Tom, what this ordinance does is it provides the written agreement that we're talking, the code talks about, right? It's an existing service outside the city, two services that clearly the city permitted back in the early 1920s and 1942. And so absent there actually being a written agreement, but we provided the service, now they're wanting to abandon it, but have it restored potentially in the future. So this ordinance would kind of have that evidence in paper trail so that if none of us are here and they want to reconnect, you know, they have the evidence.
That's essentially what it's doing, is creating that written documentation.
Current with their bill?
I don't, I mean, I'm assuming they are, or else they probably would have been shut off already, but.
Second reading.
David?
You said they haven't given you a whole lot of information about what they plan to do, but have they given you any hint of how long they want to go between cutting it off and turning it back on again?
Not to me.
I'm curious.
Yeah.
The other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, so, next up, we have a resolution. Resolution number 3546.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Slack. So resolution 3546 is, I have to turn to it here real quick. One more page. I earmark on my packet except this page. It is a resolution adopting amendments to the Dallas City Council Rules of Procedure. And so just as a summary of this, there are three changes that the Public Administration Committee considered in the council rules. They are to section 6.6, which is a new section. It adds discussion on the use of electronic devices during city council meetings and the rules around that. It also changes section 7.6 subsection E regarding public comment to only require speakers to state whether they live within the Dallas city limits. That's something that Mayor Slack has already been implementing. And then it also adds section 13, which outlines a procedure for filling a council vacancy. Those are in the redlined version of attachment A, or in the clean version attached to the resolution. So happy to have any discussion on those amendments. But the Public Administration Committee did recommend those unanimously to the council for inclusion in the rules of procedure.
Mr. Michael.
And Brian, before the meeting and in our, during our public admin meeting, we asked for one other item in an emergency clause at the end.
Yeah, so one thing that didn't make its way in, and that's my mistake, and I apologize for that, on section 13, which is the procedure to fill a council vacancy, we would add a subsection E. So you have A, which is the requirement, the recruitment process, B is the application process, you know, C, D. Section E would be like an emergency, emergency process, and that would read, notwithstanding the process above, in the event of an emergency as declared by the council, an alternate process may be used by the incumbent members of the council to fill a council vacancy or vacancies. So like, an emergency might be you had, you know, three or more counselors all resign at once, right? You might want to go through a process to, maybe just appoint people instead of, you know, like a direct appointment instead of having an application process, or, you know, some other circumstance that may come up that might necessitate a process different from what you're doing here. So it gives the council the flexibility, if you wanted to add that section, to say, hey, this is our standard run-of-the-mill, we have a vacancy, like was created by the resignation of Councilor Verden, you would follow this process, but in the event that, you know, we need to choose a different process, you have the flexibility to do that with that.
Basically, an escape clause.
It's an escape clause to your current process that you would be adopting.
What do we have to do to put that in here now? Can we?
You can just do a friendly amendment to, so you make a motion to amend the council rules of procedure as stated, as I read. If you want me to reread that again, I couldn't do that.
Do you have the actual language?
I do.
Yeah, let's have it in the record.
So if someone wanted to make a motion, they could move to add to section 13 of the council rules of procedure a subsection E, which would read, emergency process, notwithstanding the process above, in the event of an emergency as declared by the council, an alternate process may be used by the incumbent members of the council to fill a council vacancy or vacancies.
All those in favor of adding that language?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now, do I need a roll call vote then on the resolution as amended?
Unless there's any further discussion.
Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry. Anyone else have anything to say? All right, we'll go ahead with the roll call vote.
Council President Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Blaser?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jance?
Yes.
Counselor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselors Ivy?
Yes.
Resolution 3546 passes with a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any other business? If not, I will call the meeting adjourned at 8:01 PM.
An urban renewal meeting, too.
That's right.
That's right. We're gonna go right into it.
So let's, well, the only thing I'll say is that you have a process now, so we'll start following that process. Yeah.
All right, we'll move into the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting. I'll open it up at 8:01. We use the same roll call as we used before. On the agenda is approve the minutes of the February 18, 2025 Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting, and I need a motion.
Second.
Moving approved. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, that passes. Next up, I have urban renewal grant programs.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So I'll invite our economic development specialist Tyler Ferrari to come up and discuss the recommendation from the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor and other directors, tonight, we are presenting changes to the Urban Renewal District Grant Programs as recommended by the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee. So some background for you all who may not be familiar with the program, the Urban Renewal Agency established the minor improvement grant and building improvement grant to help facilitate redevelopment and revitalization to downtown Dallas. Since their inception, both programs have been popular and well-used by building owners in the downtown urban renewal district to make significant improvements to their downtown. These improvements have allowed for additional businesses to move into downtown and have dramatically reduced the vacancy rate within the central business district. And just for some additional context, we have allocated all of the money from this year's grant cycle, and that has resulted in a nine-to-one investment for the urban renewal district. So for every dollar of this grant money spent, that's resulted in $9 of private investment downtown. And so that's just been another example of how successful the program has been so far. The changes that we're proposing to you tonight are to further better utilize the limited funding available and to maximize that future investment of public dollars into these projects. The following changes were made based on the discussion at the January 2025 Urban Renewal District Advisory Commission meeting, and this is a process that we've been working with the advisory committee for some months now. And so I'm going to just quickly go through the list of the larger changes in this program, and if there are any questions, we can, I can answer those for you. So the first change is for the minor improvement grant program. We're proposing a change, changing that to a small project grant program, and that program would remain relatively the same, other than the name change and the addition of allowing for building owners to apply for a small project grant to help with the cost of professional services that might be associated with a redevelopment project. So that might be hiring an engineer, hiring an architect, hiring some other kind of professional service related to a redevelopment project they'd want to do in downtown. This is something that we have identified as something that has been a, that could be a big asset to some building owners downtown, having that additional professional help to help scope out a project, fully understand the costs that might go into that project, and would also help potentially larger projects as well, because if we're able to work with building owners, have them have a set of plans, of architectural engineering plans, that would also make them more competitive for larger grants as well. And so what we're proposing for that is projects that are using professional services, they'd be eligible for up to $3,000 from the small project grant program, just to help offset some of the costs of hiring a professional. And that really just sums up the changes in the small project grant programs. Any applicants are still going to be able to do minor improvements and receive $1,000 for that, but our focus on that is to also open the door for folks to have access to some funding to pay for those professional services. Going into the building improvement grant program now, this is where a lot of the more significant changes have been made, and among those include adding the explicit mention of property taxes to the fees that need to be paid to qualify for a grant. That was not explicit in the grant requirements, so we're adding that just for clarification for any applicants. We're also adding clarifying language that all building permits must be closed and approved by the building official before reimbursement can be made. We're adding clarifying language regarding the utilization of building improvement grant funds for projects with housing involved. That's simply just adding language that makes it a lot more clear of how housing can interact with these projects. We're also allowing for building owners to receive a small project grant and a building improvement grant in the same fiscal year if the small project grant is something that they use professional services for, and those professional services result in them applying for a building improvement grant. In the past, the agency has opted to only allow for building owners to apply for one or the other grant program each fiscal year. So what this change allows them to do is if they're using the professional services, they can apply for a grant for that, and if those professional services result in a project, they can apply for a building improvement grant to fund that actual project that the professional services help design. Since we are also, since downtown is now part of the National Historic District, we are also adding a requirement that any contributing buildings to the National Historic District or the local landmarks register follow the Secretary of Interior's guidelines for historic places. This is something that is best practices for historic districts and the changes that might be made to those buildings, ensuring that those buildings are keeping up with the historic character that allowed them to be named, contributing in the first place. And finally, we're also creating a new application process. Currently, for this fiscal year, applications can come in essentially on an ad hoc, as-needed basis, and they go through the staff approval process, and after that, they're brought to you as an agency to approve them. What we're proposing is establishing a six-week application window. We'll have applicants apply within that window. We'll have applicants apply within that window. Staff will then score the applications and present all of the applications at one time to the agency. That way, you all are able to make a better informed decision on how to allocate this limited amount of funding, rather than just... rather than allocating funding more in a vacuum. And that way, it's able... you're able to kind of balance where the agency's priorities are in terms of funding. In addition to this, based on some of the feedback we received from the Urban Renewal Agency or the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, excuse me, is if we weren't to... if we weren't to receive enough applications to exhaust funding for that fiscal year, this also provides staff the flexibility to open up another application window later in the fiscal year to encourage further applications as well. And it'd still be the same process, just a different timeframe throughout the fiscal year. Another one of the major changes that you'll see in the application packet is we've created a robust scoring sheet that's going to be used to score each of these applications. The minimum points that an applicant must score to be considered for approval is 50 points. We're providing higher point values for projects that bring new retail business downtown, and that's based off feedback we've received from the advisory committee as well as the agency in terms of the priority of what types of businesses we'd like to see downtown. Also, providing lower point values for projects that relocate a business within downtown. We're still providing them some scoring, but again, we're emphasizing the agency's desire, based on comments made in the past, that we want to bring new businesses downtown. Additionally, we're adding that applications that have buildings remain vacant for longer than six months after a project is complete, those are not receiving any points for that portion of the scoring process. And that's to make sure that we are not... that's to make sure that we are essentially providing an additional filter to make sure that the agency isn't allocating funds to buildings that won't contribute to the economic vitality of downtown.
I know.
Yes?
On that? It says vacant. Does that include modelled public?
So in the Building Improvement Guidelines, there's very specific language that the previous city attorney had laid out as how the agency defines a vacancy and how it defines a vacancy as a business that doesn't... is not front-facing and open to the public. So a building that is used for storage or some kind of non-public-facing business would be considered vacant under these rules. We're adding separate categories for COVID businesses, and those are businesses that are certified under the Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity Business Certifications. It's a certification that any business can receive in the state of Oregon, and it's a pretty robust process to receive these certifications. So those are some supplemental points that they can receive on an application. We're also adding supplemental points for any application that leads to upper-story housing. As housing is a priority that's been identified throughout Main Street programs across the country, we want to make sure that we are also ensuring that we are providing some supplemental points for folks who are creatively utilizing their upper stories. We're also adding points for applications whose in-hand match exceeds the minimum 50%. So again, we're just providing an additional incentive for projects and property owners who are going the extra mile in providing that private investment to downtown to provide them with additional points as well. Also, the feedback we received from the advisory committee was to add undesired uses to the scoring sheet and make it very clear that those undesired uses would receive zero points. And that is an additional way to discourage those uses for applying for funding. So going back to what Counselor Schilling said, a building that's used simply as storage for some kind of dropshipping business or a non-public-facing business, they would see that their type of business would receive zero points and would make it more difficult for them to reach that 50-point threshold. In terms of what the fiscal impact for this looks like, while the budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year has not been yet adopted, we're anticipating that the grant programs will be funded the same amount as this past fiscal year, which is $75,000 for the Building Improvement Grant and $10,000 for the Small Project Grant, formerly known as the Minor Improvement Grant. And that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
David, go ahead.
I've got a couple. So I believe it's 50 points they have to achieve in order to be recommended. If they're not recommended, does that mean we will never hear about the project at all? Or will you just bring it to us and say, we don't recommend it?
So the minimum points is 50 points to be recommended to the agency. So if an application doesn't receive 50 points, then that application will be returned to the applicant, letting them know that after a staff review, the application was not being taken further. But they're still... they're still able to amend that application if they're within that six-week window or apply later on in that fiscal year if another window were to be opened.
Since you mentioned the six-week window, when would that be?
So if the agency were to approve these new guidelines tonight, we would anticipate opening that window this month. So no later than the end of April, and then have it open for six weeks. Then after that six-week period, we would work to score the applications and then have those scored and prepared applications ready for the agency to consider as a whole, either at the beginning of the next fiscal year or just before that, once the budget is approved.
And you talked at some point about adding the language regarding property taxes. Are we aware of instances of abuse of that that have happened?
No, but it was... it was something that had come up during just our general staff review of the guidelines that we do every year, that property taxes is one of the few things that wasn't explicitly mentioned. And so we thought that's a pretty... that is just a pretty simple technical change that we can make so that people are well-aware that they need to be paying the property taxes before receiving grant funding.
So it's preemptive? It's not to address a problem that we've already have?
Yes.
Okay. And last question. Tell me if I've got this right. For the Small Improvement Grants, maximum that an applicant could receive would be 3,000?
3,000 if they're using... if they're applying for a...
1,000 if it's not for professional services. But in any case, three is the maximum.
Yes.
And if I'm reading it right, also, the minimum to reply... to apply for the Building Improvement Grant is 10,000?
Yes.
Did I have that right? Okay, that's all.
Then, Michael.
This isn't really a discussion or anything or a question. It's a thank you. We've served on... Larry and I have served on committees putting numbers down on lots of applications and have asked for something like this. And it looks like you guys have been very... took a very broad approach and have accomplished everything that we'd knocked our heads against for years. So it's greatly appreciated that this is before us tonight.
Second.
There's a motion on page five.
I move to adopt the proposed changes to the Urban Renewal Grant Programs for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Is this a simple...
Discussion item.
Oh, yes, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of issues. Just by way of full disclosure, I was on the advisory committee when we created this program. So I was there at the birth. And the intention was, and as far as I know, still is, primarily to get rid of blight downtown. And it's worked very well doing that. Downtown looks better now than it has at any time in the last 20 years. This... there's some good stuff in here, but this feels to me like a solution in search of a problem, trying to fix something that isn't broken. Because we know the program works well. We even heard that in Tyler's presentation, how well it's been working. Oh, that is one of the things I forgot to ask. You said that all the money for this current fiscal year has been allocated. I thought I saw a blurb in the latest City Newsletter saying that there was money still available. Is that out of date?
So the... there's still funding available for the Minor Improvement Grant Program. There's about...
So it's the big one that's used there.
The Building Improvement Grants are exhausted.
Thank you. That was not clear. One of the problems I have here is with the scoring. Well, I want to keep this as short as possible, so I'll skip the minor points and just try to get the big ones. If somebody doesn't achieve the minimum 50 points, let's say there's... that giving these criteria, there's an application that comes in at 45 points, just to pick a number out of the air. But there's something about it, either its location or who's doing it or some other factor that makes it look like a good bet, we're never going to hear about it. It's going to go back to the applicant, and we won't even get a chance to look at it and prioritize it, using those intangible factors that aren't measured in here. That's why I asked, are we going to hear about it with just a not recommended recommendation? Or are we not going to hear about it at all? And the answer was, we're not going to hear about it at all. So I have a bit of a problem with that because it takes some of our flexibility away from us. Also, there's a... what looks to me like a funding gap here. The most that you can apply for for the Small Improvement Grant is 3,000. The minimum you can apply for for the Building Improvement Grant is 10,000. So there's a $7,000 gap in there. If you have a project that's going to cost 6,500, you're SOL. We cannot help you. You are surely out of luck. And there are some other things to hear, but I don't want to take up a whole lot of time dealing with this. But those strike me as particularly big issues. And the other one is the matching requirements. We've never had matching requirements in these programs before, and they work. They work well. So what we're going to do here is create more of an obstacle course to getting some of these things funded. How much impact that'll have, nobody can predict, but it's an obstacle that doesn't exist now and that will. There's a few other things like that in here, but I won't waste any more time talking about it. You know, everybody's got to make up their mind. For me, this does not sound like it's ready for prime time yet.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
It's always been a 50% matching, has it not?
Yes, for the Building Improvement Grant.
But not for the small one.
Yeah, and so we are introducing a 25% match for the Minor Improvement Grant as well. And so again, that is to make... that is to ensure... that is just to promote higher-quality applications.
To get in the game.
That's one way to put it, yes.
This is all under the Urban Renewal banner, and we have accomplished... I'll be... I think why I'm very much in support of this. Now we're trying to raise taxes to fund the Urban Renewal District through... which is done through improvements such as putting stuff into businesses that are actually being taxed at a higher rate. And so I think that it's what this is accomplishing. The blight is that we've done a fantastic job. If we need to go back to a pure blight removal, then I say that we can go back next year to a... just a blight removal. Right now, I think this is a great job of moving the agency into increasing the use of our downtown as a downtown, instead of a storage facility.
To Counselor Shane's question, if someone were to come in at 40 points, they would be able to reapply with some coaching or some mentoring on your part, couldn't they?
Yes. So if they... So say an applicant comes in and applies, we score it, they get 40 points. If they're still within that six-week application window, then we'll return the application to them, suggest to them, hey, here's a couple of places where you might be able to find that... those 10 additional points. But if... I can refer the board members to Attachment A, Appendix A, the scoring criteria. We structured the scoring criteria so past projects would receive that minimum 50 points, essentially, if they're high-quality projects. So for example, under the Building Improvements, you can earn 50 maximum points there, and project repairing the exterior of a building that's in poor structural condition and a project repairing the interior of a building that's in poor structural condition, typically those things go hand-in-hand, and so that is one way to get that 50 minimum points.
Go ahead, David.
One thing on that reapplying business, you're quite right that that is how it would work. The difference between the way it is today and the way it's going to be under this scheme is that six-week window. If you can't get through all of that, apply, get it scored, have it go back, you know, change whatever needs changing, coming back. If you can't do that in six weeks, you wait till next year. That's the difference between this and what we have today.
I would just add to that, though, that right now, today, we open up the window in Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, July 1, when funding is available, and it's a first-come, first-served basis. So I mean, even with a six-week window, you could have more opportunity to apply in a six-week period than you could in the current situation where, you know, you have five or six applicants that come in on July 2 and take all the funds on day two, right? On a first-come, first-served basis. So there's pros and cons to all of it. I look at the metrics for 50 points. It's going to be hard not to get 50 points, right? I mean, just looking at, you know, does the project improve the exterior of the building? 25 points. The interior of the building, 25 points. If you have a project that improves some of the exterior or some of the interior, you're at 50 points, just with some improvements.
It's easy to get 50 points. It kind of reduces the importance of doing it at all.
But that being said, you get a maximum of 150 points. And so there's a lot of things in here that I think are encouraging certain types of projects. And so you would get higher points for the projects that maybe the council or the agency in this case would like to see. So a project that improves the space that will serve customers after 5:00 PM and promotes nighttime pedestrian activity, 15 points, right? So it's more than just meeting the minimum, right? We're getting a number of applications in at the same time to be able to compare them against each other, similar to what we did when we had this program that was funded through the ARPA funds, which again was very successful. So this is modeled after a program, not similar to the current Building Improvement Program under Urban Renewal, but similar to the program that we had under ARPA, which again was very successful. So... and it's contributed to the vitality of our downtown. So it is different than what we have today, but it's similar to what we have used and has been successful. And I don't think there's things here that would, you know, discourage good projects from being completed in the downtown.
Further discussion? Is this by motion only?
Since we're having some discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Got a motion to approve it already, or do we just go straight to a roll call vote?
There's a motion and a second.
All right. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Director Bariantos?
Yes.
Director Blaser?
Yes.
Director Briggs?
Yes.
Director Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Director Jantz?
Yes.
Director Schilling?
Yes.
Director Shane?
No.
Director Spivey?
Yes.
It passes seven to one.
All right. Do you have anything else for the Urban Renewal Agency? All right, thank you, Tyler. I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:26.